Remind everybody that the meeting is being digitally recorded, so again, please be respectful of each other when speaking and while listening to what's being said. Is there anyone here for open session? Okay, Katie, if you will announce.
All right, I got a laundry list. Let me see if I can do these in orders, because I started adding. I was like, oh, I gotta really tell, talk about that. So, Historical Society, this Thursday, at six o'clock, is having the Quabin Then and Now presentation at Burnshirt. I guess they're gonna be doing historical pictures and stuff, but they have a presenter coming out and going through the then and now of the Quabin Reservoir. So, it's, it looks pretty good from, they have a little Facebook event post, and it looks pretty informational, and it looks like it's got some good stuff on there. So, that's this Thursday, six o'clock, at the Burnshirt Chapel, and it's from the Hubbardson Historical Society. The next up is, there's two kids in town that are working on Project 351. I don't know if anybody's ever heard of that. It's through the school system, and they do projects and fundraisers. They're working with Cradles to Crayons, and they're doing a youth clothing drive. There is currently a bin at the Hubbardson Public Library and the Hubbardson Center School, and the bins will be there between March twentieth and March thirty-first, and they're collecting clothing and shoes and things like that for newborns to, I think, you, like, the largest youth sizes. So, all kinds of kids' clothing and stuff. So, anyone that has any baby clothes, you know, used clothes that their kids have grown out of and they're still good, they can donate them in the bins. The bins, again, are at the Hubbardson Center School and the public library through the thirty-first.
Two questions on that, Katie?
Yeah.
I don't know if you know the answers.
Maybe.
Number one, are the bins only accessible during the hours of those two buildings being operation?
I would imagine, yes.
Okay, and number two, when you say "used," I assume we mean gently-used and not-used?
Yes, gently-used, yes, yes. That's what I said, nicely, nicely-cleaned, like, clothes you could hand down to somebody, yes. Not, they don't want junk. But yeah, it works through Cradles to Crayons, and again, it's Project 351, and there's two high school student, one high school student and one eighth-grade student that is working on that. All right, so then we come up to, let me get my list in order, the Easter egg hunt, which is always a fun thing. All kids are welcome, April first, eleven a.m., and the rain date is April fourth, and it is at the rec field. It starts out with pictures with the Easter bunny, bring your own camera. The Easter bunny sits there on the bandstand steps, and you can, like, sit around, and they'll hold babies and stuff like that. And then we have three separate fields, so there's no, like, little kids getting run over by the big kids. It's all good, and we try to keep it organized. Once we say "go," it's done in five seconds, so, like, god. But the kids always have a good time. There's always plenty of candy, plenty of Easter eggs for everyone, and like I said, it's, it's free, so come out and get your pictures done. It's, it's a good time for all, and again, that's April first at eleven a.m. with a rain date of the second.
The second, okay. Oh, you said the fourth?
No, second. April, April second. Did I say the fourth? I apologize. I apologize. I might have done that.
Follow-up on that, Katie?
Yep.
So, what's the oldest you're looking for in that?
Oh, they can, for gra, I don't care. I'm not turning any child away, if there's a kid.
So, like, if you bring, like, a nine-year-old, that's okay?
Bring your own bag. Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, bring your own bag. We have some high school kids. We have the big field, and we make those kids run. Because if you're gonna, if you wanna go out there, you're gonna run for those eggs. We're gonna spread them far and wide. But yeah, it's, it's put on through parks and recs, and my Girl Scout troop, one-one-eight-oh-nine, we fill all the eggs and spread them all out and provide the Easter bunny, so.
One more question for you.
Yeah.
Are we looking for just town residents on that one?
No, it's open to all.
Open to the community.
Yeah, yeah, it's open to the community. People bring their grandkids from next town over and everything. It's, it's a good fun day. All right, so the next thing we have is also April first, and at the Rod and Gun, the Double Barrel Band and Flipping the Bird barbecue will be there. The Rod and Gun is hosting this, and it is open to the public, so if you need something to do that night, that sounds like fun. Then we have the Lions on April seventh at seven p.m. is having a meat raffle. They got the meats down there, seven p.m., the doors open. They usually go to, what, like, ten or so, I believe, but it's a, it's a pretty good.
Yeah, till it's done.
Yeah, okay. So, yeah, so that's April seventh at the Rod and Gun, Lions Meat Raffle, seven p.m. All right, and then next, we have Keep Hubbardson Beautiful Day. That is April twenty-second, eight to noon. There'll be a bottle and can drive. They will be the recycling, electronics recycling, and a dumpster, basically a drive-through just like usual. And you drop three cans out one spot, throw your trash out another spot, throw your recycling out another spot. The recycling, there is a fee. Everything else is free, but again, that's April twenty-second. There is no rain date, and it is eight to noon. Then we have.
Follow-up, when you say, sorry, when you say recycling.
Electronic recycling.
Oh, okay.
Yep, electronic recycling. They do take, like, metal goods and things like that. It doesn't have to be just electronic. So, if you show up with, like, a bunch of scrap metal, like, as long as it's reasonable, and it can fit in the back of the truck, they will take it for a fee for miscellaneous stuff, but usually it's like TVs. People wanna get rid of their TVs and monitors or stereos or old computers, stuff like that.
Is there a fee schedule online that people can check?
Uh, there will be. I will make a flyer very shortly. I had to get the fee scheduled from the, because I'm the treasurer for Boy Scouts, so I had to, I have to figure that out, so. I'm working on that. But yeah, it's usually, it's not too bad, so that would be up soon. Yes.
Will there also be Earth Day cleanups that day, or?
Yes, that is the Keep Hubbardson Beautiful Day, so people pick up their trash around their area, and they bring it, and they can throw it in the dumpster, so along the street and everything else. There are bags available. If you don't wanna use your own bags, you can come swing by and grab a bag and go to someplace that's gross. There's not, once the snow melts, there's always someplace gross you can find very easily with nips and miscellaneous trash and junk. But it's basically town-wide cleanup, and you can chuck it in the dumpster there, so that's, yeah. Any other follow-ups? All right. This is the most follow-ups I had on one night. This is like fun. Okay, so.
She's gonna make announcements in Paxton, so.
I know, I'm gonna start. Okay, so we got a couple of things at Plainview Farm that are super fun and family-friendly. There is a paint night that they're having on May thirteenth at two p.m., and that's family-friendly. That's, they have a sign up. You have to, you know, register and pay and everything like that, but I guess you're gonna be painting their Olpekas, I think, or something like that. But it is family-friendly, they said, so it's open to the public. And then they also will be having their spring fling as well on May twentieth and twenty-second. Again, that is open to the public, and that has a lot of local crafters and vendors, a lot of townies there, so definitely stop in, and you can find some nice stuff there. Then we have the Memorial Day Parade on May twenty-ninth, and they are starting it at eleven fifteen. Right on the dot, a.m. We just got all the info. So, I'm sure more info will come out, and I will go over that as it comes.
Is that the same time as last year, or is that a different time?
It's a little bit different. I think it was eleven, so this time it's eleven fifteen, so, not by far.
More time to commute, we're good.
Yes, not by far. I think it's a little bit later, but not too far off. And then we have the Hubbardson Fair in June on the tenth, from nine to two. Ooh, I missed one. I got out of order. There is a Boy Scout race on May sixth at Mount Jeff. More information to follow on that. We haven't had the sign-ups out yet, but there is going to be, like, a race out in the woods. If you're a racer or like to run or wanna contribute in some way, we will take your money as a Boy Scout. It's a fundraiser to help raise money for, they, they need to fix their trailer. So, we're going to be doing a, a wood race out in Mount Jeff. I, yeah, that's as much as I know. Okay.
Katie, thank you very much. Okay, the consent agenda, I can tell everybody, as far as the minutes, we were all here for both of those meetings and the appointments. We're waiving the waiting period, so if we can have a motion to accept, to approve the consent agenda.
I would like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion made and second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Yes, opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. New business. First one is Mary. You're here because I had requested that you come, because I said, people, plus myself, asked me some questions in terms of the project of the church. A lot of great comments about the way the church looks, but there are a couple of spots that I was concerned about, and as it turns out, so were a couple of other people. And so I just wanted to know, is this still an ongoing project, or what's gonna happen with the front portal and the garden aside? At the very top, there's a big wide gap.
Yeah, yeah, we know that they're there. When we, when we booked the project, well, first of all, before I go into that, I just wanna publicly thank everyone that voted and, you know, allowed this to, project to go forward for, with us. The project itself, with everything that we've done so far, between lighting and doors and the repairs that needed to be done to the actual building itself, for the roof over the portcoves and everything that we've done so far, has a little over two hundred thousand dollars. So, you have the hundred thousand from the town. It was huge, huge help for us, so we're very grateful for that, and I just wanna let people know how much, how far it went. You know, we were able to do this because of it. We would never have been able to do it for that. So, but right now, the original project did not include the soffits and fascia, and it did not include, you know, the eaves underneath. That's why those places.
I didn't know that, okay.
It did not include that mainly because we had to make a decision and the expense of how we were going to approach it. Because there is the original wood, it's probably hand-tuned with all of their, the different, the grades that are in there. You know, it's not flat. It's beautifully done. They're, they're really, you know, nicely put together. We have to, had to decide and will be deciding if we're going to scrape and paint to keep the original or if we wanted to try to use the siding with all of the, the different looks to it, to keep it that way. And we've gotten a couple estimates, so at this point, to paint, which it, we're, which would include the boom truck for us to do the bell tower as well, it would be all the roof line, trim, the painting. We wanna include, but she didn't hear, all scraping down and painting the edges of the windows. Because origin, our original project was going to be, all the windows would be trimmed, but because the older windows that are upstairs, the eighteen-twenty-seven windows, the ones up at the top, were actually part of the front, the window frame as part of the window, it wasn't something that could be trimmed. So, they trimmed the bottom ones with the siding, but they couldn't trim the top ones. Those, and of course, as well, are beautifully done, and we didn't wanna cover up the, the work that's on them.
The historical part, yeah.
So, yeah, we're hoping to, what we'll do with this pro, next project is gonna be to paint, scrape and paint the eaves, replace any of the wood that's rotted, any of the, you know, that kind of thing, but the fascia and the, those pieces, the soffits would all, the freeze board, everything would be done with paint instead of the, because to do it with trim in the, what we used with all the crown accents, they have to use so many different kinds of molding and trim and crown placement. By the time they're done, and it's like nine hundred feet or something once around, so you're talking like five different kinds of trim to just do that one little bit of edging, the molding, would have cost, would cost us well over fifty thousand dollars. So, we're gonna go for paint.
Have you ever heard of something called rhino lining?
That, we are, is that the one that, like, sticks to it or something?
It's paint, but it's not just paint. Like, it gets sprayed in the back. You normally hear in the back of pickup trucks, it gets sprayed. It's called a rhino liner. But they do it with houses now, and I don't know how good it is or anything. I don't wanna say that, that's where you should go, but it's not just paint, so I don't know if that might last you long enough.
We're gonna definitely explore what kinds of paint and, you know, what would be the best thing that will hold the longest. Obviously, the wood is old, so a lot of it has to be scraped. A lot of it will also probably have to be replaced. We did a lot of replacement wood on the, when we did the siding. There were a number of places we had to replace. But painting at this point would cost us between thirteen and twenty thousand dollars. Big difference from fifty, which would be using the PVC. Plus, you're not really gonna get the same look. You know, it'll be close, but it wouldn't be the same.
Do you have that, the twenty?
So, well, we're working on budgeting that in. We, we still have an amount that we still owe on the siding, and it's coming down dramatically. You know, we're under forty thousand dollars, which, considering we, where we started from, I think we've done pretty well with a small congregation, so we're, we've got our yard sales coming up for the spring and hopefully be able to get to this.
Do you have a target? Do you have a target date or anything like that?
We hope by the fall. We hope by the fall we'll be able to start it. I don't think it's gonna be a spring project.
Is that what you said?
Oh, the painting? Yeah, once the painting's gone up, they'll do it quickly. I couldn't believe how fast they did this. Their crew was amazing. They did the whole, and it was over seven, seventy square, I forget how many square our building is, but it's a big building, and they did it in three weeks, three and a half weeks. Though, that crew was out there from early morning till late at night when it got dark, and they didn't stop. I mean, we came in and brought sandwiches, and they hardly even took, you know, a couple bites of sandwiches, and they were back working again. They worked really hard. That was a huge project, and they did really well. We were really pleased with the company and the work that they did. But yeah, those places were not in the original project plan, and that's why they, they stayed that way for now, because we had to decide how we were gonna approach it and how much it was gonna cost and what we could afford. Because at that time, you know, with the project the way it was, we knew there were gonna be extras, and we didn't wanna overextend what we could afford to do, so that's why it looks like that. But we're, we're working on it.
Well, thank you, all right. Anyone have any questions for Mary about this? Again, thank you for coming, and I do appreciate it, because I, I wasn't aware myself that that was not part of the project.
Right, right, yeah. It, it just was something we, at the time, when we worked with the preservation committee as well, we had to decide how we were gonna approach it, but then when we figured out how much it would cost and adding another fifty thousand dollars or more to the cost of what we were already looking at was a little overwhelming. So, we said, okay, let's get the main thing done, which was get the siding on, and it looks beautiful.
Yes, it does.
And then we'll make that our next project, which we really would like to see it done by, you know, into the fall, so.
Well, thank you again.
Thank you all again, and again, we appreciate the help from, from the townspeople, that's for sure. Couldn't have got it done without it, so.
And it desperately needed it.
Yeah, sure did. It's been a blessing, and I pray it's a blessing to everybody that drives by, because it really stands out. I was laughing, because, you know, when you guys had your big storm last week with the thirty-something inches, and one of the reporters was standing over by the bank or the diner, and the church was in the background, and they're, oh, thank god, it looks good.
Yeah, it looks so much better.
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're thrilled. We're happy, because we wanna see it, it be nice.
Yeah, and then once that's all done, once you get the rest of those touches done, it'll make a huge difference.
It'll make a huge difference, yeah, quite well. So, thank you very much.
Thanks, Mary.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going, item B, Department of Public Works Garage Roof Contract. Wanna fill us in?
Absolutely. We did an RFP for this earlier this year. This will be funded with, hopefully, one hundred thousand dollars of capital improvement money that has been approved by the Capital Improvement Plan Committee and fifty thousand dollars secured by Ann Goby's office in the state senate budget last year. We're going to have to request that it go over fiscal years, but that is something that they, that happens. When I worked in the state senate, it was something that happened to almost all of the projects. So, we put out an RFP and got two. This one at one hundred and twenty-eight thousand, and then another one that was about twenty or thirty thousand dollars more. If you would like to see the other proposal, it's something I can make available to you.
Were they RFPs or IFBs?
RFPs.
They were an invitation for bids under chapter one forty-nine?
I'll have a check for you.
They submitted a sealed envelope with the price only, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's an IFB.
It says general bid, right, yeah, if they want it for general bid.
So, we did the invitation for bid process. We put it out there. We follow the guidelines. We got two people who are interested back.
Yes.
You've submitted us the documents that you have here.
Mm-hmm.
I have one question, and I'm assuming the answer is going to be, we'll get it in the event we actually enter a contract, but I didn't see the documents for a fifty percent payment bond, so.
That's coming once they get drafted the contract, which will just be the, as you know, the standalone general contract with the wording from the request and from their bid included.
Okay, excellent. I have another follow-up question. So, it looks like in the documents, as I was reviewing earlier, they appear to be giving us a one-year warranty on their product. If I read that correctly. I think it was in one of the general forms of the bid.
That is likely. I do not know what the warranty of roofing usually is.
Okay.
And, but Travis, who I'm sure does know what the warranty of roofing usually is, didn't say anything, and he was, me and him reviewed these together when we opened them.
Okay. I was just wondering. I don't know if we had put out something specific in our bid documents as to how much of a warranty we were looking for.
Do not believe so.
But if we can just confirm that that's the standard to make sure that we're not under warranting a roof.
What is the material of the roof?
Metal.
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 The metal roof?
Yeah.
I thought they had a lifetime warranty, but that must be residential.
That would be a manufacturer's warranty that would get passed through.
Is this a labor?
Go ahead.
Yeah, that's what I was, it sounds like a labor warranty.
Yeah. There's likely more of a warranty with the manufacturer of that.
With the materials.
With the materials.
Okay. All right, so I just wanted to make sure, yes.
One year doesn't sound like a lot for a material roof.
Because under the warranties and guarantees section, it says, "All prospective bidders on items, equipment, services that carry warranties or guarantees shall include their sealed bid, a copy of the warranty and or guarantee, as well as a copy of the warranty and guarantee on the items being bid, if applicable. Warranty starts after the day of acceptance by the using department. Please complete the following specified warranty guarantee is for more than contractually required one-year period." And it says, "One-year warranty after work is finished." So, we just wanna make sure that our materials are warranted longer than that.
What, what we need to do is make sure the materials warranty is warranted, warranted longer than that. And if the one year is a labor warranty, we have to see if there's any manufacturer's inspection that has to be done prior to.
Sign-off.
The manufacturer's warranty sign-off, right?
So, are all these, are all of these questions, then, we can't, we have to postpone the motion to authorize it?
Wouldn't go that far, but this is something I can, I can look into prior to finalizing the, the contract. It's, since we can't do it until after July one, no one's in a particular rush.
Okay.
I have another question need to figure. So, the lump sum for the bid amounts, one twenty-five. And if I heard you correct, you said a hundred thousand to be authorized to be spent from capital and?
I lowered the capital number to eighty-five to, yeah, it's in the budget.
So, eighty-five K from capital and fifty K from the state earmark or whatever, maybe from legislative docs?
Yes.
Okay.
So.
That still doesn't add up to one twenty-five.
In, in the bid package?
Yes.
I thought it says here, if out of this contract, that everything would be in the bid package. And you did receive the bid package, and there was nothing in there about material?
So, might have been in the original.
Whose material they're using or whatever. That might give you a better idea what kind of warranty we're talking about.
And that's something I will look into.
Okay.
It might have been in the original IFB that Nate put out, because usually when you're accepting the bid, you're saying all the documents that were part of the original bid request or IFB are incorporated into the contract and the documents, but instead of doing a lengthy contract.
Because I think that's very important, the warranty of the materials. The one-year labor standard, that's, that's a standard. That's one year.
And to answer Chris's question, whatever the amount of the one of the, that is needed, will be what comes out. There will not be extra money coming out of the Capital Improvement Plan in order to pad anything or anything like that. It would be what we needed. I will edit it so that in the final rendition of our budget documents, it states the exact number of whatever it may be to get to the one twenty-eight-five. It'd be like seventy-five thousand five hundred.
So, you just have a little higher right now as a contingency, just in case something changes?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Chairman, would you accept the motion?
To authorize him to sign the contract, yes.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we authorize Nate or the town administrator on behalf of the select board to sign the contract for the Department of Public Works Garage Roof with FRG contractors in an amount of one hundred and twenty-eight thousand five hundred dollars contingent upon approval of town meeting.
Second.
Motion made and second. Any further discussion on any new questions?
Yeah, I got discussion. Why are we signing a contract when we're not clear on what's covered? It's just asked about five different questions.
That's what I'm going to check prior to signing it. You're just authorizing the potential signing of it. I will check into, into the warranties and circle back with you guys. FRG has been wonderful to deal with. They get back to me really quickly. All of their references checked out, as references usually do. But they've been, they've been great, and I'm sure I will be able to, in a quick turnaround, get the answer on these warranties. And I will get it back to you without a, you guys can, the select board obviously has the right to hold this off until the April third meeting, if you see it fit, and I can get the information on the warranties and circle back so that everybody knows it's above bar.
I like that idea. Me too. Put it up for a motion.
Okay, then let's, we'll call the question a discussion. We have to vote on this motion, and if it, so is the position of the board to, to vote it down, then we'll deal with the, which, the other proposal, okay? So, we're, we're voting right now on the motion to authorize town administrator to sign the contract based on everything Heather put into the motion, okay? So, all in favor of not authorization?
Aye.
Yes. Okay, opposed? One?
Yes.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Crap, why does it always come down to me? Um, I'll oppose, because if we can, yeah, if we can wait, no, if we can wait, I would like, I would like.
Okay, then the motion is down, turned down. Okay, so now we'll open up with this, throw another motion.
Mr. Chairman, can I respectfully request more time on this matter?
Okay, so we don't have to act anything?
No.
Okay, all right. So be it.
We're good.
Okay. Item C, Select Board Representation on the QRSD Collective Bargaining. Would you like to explain that?
Yes, so, the Quabin Regional School District is in the process of speaking with their labor unions regarding the collective bargaining process. They reached out to all of the communities, and as of this afternoon, two, if not three, of the communities waived their right to have a representative on this board or on this interview panel. After receiving that email, I did receive a phone call from two fellow town administrators noting that it would probably be the best option of the other communities to have a Hubbardson representative be on this panel because of our outward strong opinions on financial matters regarding the school.
Everyone else leading the charge.
And that is still something, even if we did have a volunteer this evening, that volunteer would likely still have to talk to the other two communities, but from what I'm seeing, people aren't lining up to take this opportunity on.
When is it?
Heather's on it. Heather's on it.
Well, no, but I know, but the problem is they can't get their dates straight on any of their meetings, and.
So, who, who waived their right? Barry was one of them for sure.
I think Ocam.
Ocam and Hardwick.
Ocam and Hardwick?
Yeah, yeah.
I think there's only, it's only one representative from all the communities, right?
Now it is. It was originally gonna be more, but now, as people are refusing.
Are we part of a vote for, for this?
Well, it would really just be if one person volunteered, they could do it, and then you'd have to talk to, or are you asking if you would be part of the vote with the collective bargaining agreements? I believe so.
Yeah, I don't get along good with those people, so.
Well, let's, let's level set what we're talking about. Yeah, this has nothing to do with the budget that's coming. This is just collective bargaining.
Oh, this is everything.
Yes, it does.
Just repay those.
Oh, yeah.
So, this isn't, this isn't the budget process. This is collective bargaining.
Yes, which has to do with, it has a major impact on the budget, because it is a large portion of the monies they'll have to pay to their teachers and other bargaining units.
Then we're gonna get clawed in with their contract already. I can feel it anyways.
I have some questions.
Probably five, five and five.
Go ahead.
This is new to me, um, have we been, has have the towns been invited to participate in these? Contract negotiations in the past?
That I do not know.
Usually it's, I I haven't been around long enough in Hubbardston on the board to answer that question, cause they don't come up every year, right?
Right.
But usually it's standard on the school committee and they usually actually with the regional districts, they have one select board member. That's agreed to amongst all the towns who are members.
And and the reason for that is what?
They want representation from the town side at the table to express, you know, concerns and it. Now granted, you're one person amongst however many who are gonna outvote you potentially, but at least you can go on record and you can fight.
Well, who else is on the, on this group that is talking to the, to the, to the collective bargaining people?
It's probably, it's usually like a subset of the school committee and the superintendent.
Okay, so would inconceivably would one of our school committee reps be on it?
I think Debbie is on it, I think Debbie is on it.
They might already be on it.
Yeah, I thi- I I think so.
Okay, okay.
Sorry.
So but the idea is to give the town, you know, a seat at the table and to also be able to keep people informed of what's happening.
And is it usual and customary for all of the district, all of the district towns except for one to collapse and ask one person to do it?
Since I've been on the board, this, that's very unusual.
Oh, it is, oh, it is.
Usually everyone wants or most, usually there's more people that come to the table.
I I think our reputation is growing.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, they're, they're looking for transparency, right, that's this is one way to do it.
Well, no, but I'm more interested in why nobody else wants to be on this, that's what I'm trying to say.
Because their rates didn't go up.
If you look at the.
They're gonna go up anyway.
If you look at the school budget here, the budget presentation, right? The only folks who spoke, I think one person from another town spoke and then everyone who was on the call from Hubbardston spoke. Or chatted or whatever communication. So I think it's possible to someone's prior comment that our reputation is starting to precede us. Um. And that they know that regardless of whether we're going to be able to make a difference or not, at least, you know, whoever's on there from Hubbardston is probably gonna speak up if they have concerns.
They can call it reputation if they want, but we scrape it for every dime we get, so we have to be careful. Do they wanna cook, put a reputation on us for that, let, so be it.
So Nate, do we have any dates, times or any information on that?
I've looked at every, at every email from Jessica Bennett, they have yet to give a time. Ms. Chamberlain had mentioned Wednesdays yesterday, I believe when we talked to her just in passing, but I cannot take that.
Was that Wednesdays for the screening committee for the superintendent or is that for the?
We're talking about two things at once.
Yeah, well, I I think of, cause I was standing next to you at the time, that that was the uh, screening committee, yeah.
Conversation.
The previous meeting of this entity, previous meeting of this entity was on Monday. So they've previously met on Monday, but that doesn't mean that they're going to.
That's what kills it for me is they hop around so much that, there's no way.
I can't keep up with her.
Well, I'm just super overlooked, so.
Do we have anyone on the board who has flexibility or is interested, I'd be very interested to do it, but it depends on what it is, I can only be in one place at one time. I'm not superwoman, unlike Katie.
A single individual, can't you have an alternate?
For those, they're gonna want one person because you have to sit in with the negotiations every time, right, so you're going back with the union, you're going back to strategy.
Was it during the day day?
You don't want a changing out team on that.
Ten AM.
Oh, if it's during the day day, oh, ah, man, I got free time all day long. If it's during the day, I could do it and that doesn't, I don't even care what day it is, as long as it's daytime.
So far.
Mr. Chairman, would you accept a motion?
I think I know what time it is.
I'd like to make a motion that uh, as the select board, we um, put forward Katie Young. As the potential select board representative from the region for the QRSD collective bargaining.
Motion's made.
Second.
And second, any discussion?
I have a discussion, as long as it's during the day, if it's at night, I can't, I'm out.
Together, I'll send an email in the morning with UCC on it to just get the wheels turning.
I just don't wanna put everybody's hopes on.
Sure you could, can do.
Oh, if it's during the day, yeah, all day long, yeah.
All right, and uh, no further discussion?
So they haven't negotiated at all yet on the contract?
I'm sure they've done most of the negotiating.
What's the union looking for?
It seems like it's a final vote.
So what is the union looking for, percentage?
We don't know, every meeting that they've had is an executive session, that's why.
They can't release that.
It would be, it would be pretty bad bargaining.
So what's the point of.
They need a commitment, yeah.
Usually it's common knowledge when the union makes a proposal for what they're looking for.
Everything of the last couple of meetings have been a request to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining.
Secret study.
But have they actually negotiated with the union or it's just the strategy on behalf of the, well, at what point? Are we like behind on getting a representative onto collective bargaining and like they're already rolling or are they simply just having the school committee come up with strategy? On what they'd like to do before they charge the subcommittee for collective bargaining with their feet?
The original email is from Friday, March tenth.
Okay.
Dear select board members, as you are aware, state statute allows select board members of the five district towns. To select one individual select board member to serve with the Quabon Regional School District School Committee in the collective bargaining process. We have a number of contracts that will expire in June of twenty twenty three and have begun our work in this area. We expect to engage the municipal representative in negotiate, negotiations in the very near future. I trust select birds will appoint an individual select board member from one of the towns to serve in this capacity. Please notify Jessica Bennett if you would like to do so.
So it's only one town?
One representative from all of the select.
Then on March seventeenth, she said, I'm following up on this request, again, one delegate. Decided on by the five district towns needs to be chosen to participate in collective bargaining process. We are hoping to bring the QR TA contract to the full school committee for ratification as early as April sixth. So that makes me believe that they're already.
They're already, they're well into it already.
Then the town of Hardwick has chosen not to participate, therefore a representative from one of the four remaining towns will be chosen. That later in an email, town of Ocam also.
So they aren't even negotiating that.
Yeah, very much.
So what is the purpose of this committee, I don't understand that, if they're already in the negotiation.
Seems like it's more to put on the paper that they were present.
So I think, I think at this point it behooves us regardless to try to get in there for whatever we can get in, wherever we can get in. But other town, other districts, what they've done is the school district was a little more engaged. They didn't just send an email, they said, we're gonna have a joint meeting, all of you people send one person from every select board, we'll meet and y'all can tell me who you want.
Well, this is consistent with everything else that has proceeded.
They're already.
Mr. Chairman, I I'd like, uh, without any, Nate.
Been made in a second already, so any more discussion on this?
No, good.
And I think, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Opposed, thank you very much and keep us posted.
I will do my best.
So if you have any competition from Barry or.
Whatever, if we do, we do.
Whoever else is up there.
Okay, item D, authorization of an intermunicipal agreement between City Gardener, Town of Hubbardston for Animal Control Services, Nate?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, this is the same as our previous intermunicipal agreement with a two percent increase. Year over year, uh, Heather had also mentioned that we want to change per our. Changes from sport selectment to select board, which I will do and I don't believe there will be any problems and there's also a scrivener's error in the date. So I will, scrivners, not scrivners.
That's good, and in that same section, uh, it just doesn't read straight with select board in Hubbardston.
Yeah.
Just make sure it's in English.
I will go through and fix that prior to signing anything, the mayor of Gardener received city council approval at last night's meeting of the city council, so.
Who else is part of this agreement right now, Barry?
I don't think anybody.
It's just Gardner.
It's just Gardner.
I think it's just us.
Uh, no, who else is part of the regional animal control services, so we just have a single IMA with Gardner. But Gardner doesn't serve just the town of Hubbardston.
Service Templeton as well.
And Ashford ham. They do.
That might not be a thing anymore.
They got rid of it?
I, maybe, I can look into that for you.
No, they don't do Barry, cause Rutland does Barry.
Barry's too far.
Okay, I was just wondering how far they're splitting.
Their people.
Their people. Mr. Chairman, would you accept a motion?
To have the, for the TA to sign the contract with the city of Gardner, yes.
So move.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we authorize the town administrator to sign the IMA. Uh, for animal control services with the city of Gardner for the contract term of July first, twenty twenty three through June thirtieth, twenty twenty six.
Motion made.
Second.
And second?
Discussion.
Go ahead.
Um, is this contract for one employee?
Three.
Is there any division of time, any contractual division of time? How many hours East Street people would be spending in each participating town?
I do not believe so, I think it's based on emergency services, when there is an issue involving an animal control situation, they go to that town. And they get called in and it all runs through the dispatch in the city of Gardner.
They also do barn inspections and things like that, kennel inspections.
They, they do the kennel inspections, they, yeah. But the, the majority of it is for the emergency services with the.
We don't have to buy a vehicle this year, right?
No.
Nope.
Okay.
Has, are you done, Chris? Has there ever been an issue with them where they couldn't come to the town, where they were tied up in other towns?
Not that I have heard of.
No.
I've called them on Sunday before for random dogs in the neighborhood and it's been an hour, hour and a half on a Sunday, they showed up.
Excellent, that's all I needed to know.
They inspect my kennel very professionally, they do a good job.
Awesome.
Good to hear, any further questions? Then we'll go, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Yes, yes.
Opposed, stain, motion carried, uh, Sue, why don't you come up and join us at this point? Uh, and if you will.
I may as well.
Nate, we, I'm sorry, yes, you too, and Sue, call your meeting to order.
Get him a name plate, Jeff, that's your job.
You all in, where's our name plates? All right, seven twelve, calling our meeting to order from the finance committee. All right, we're all ears.
Okay, turn it over to me.
One second.
Yeah, yeah, I can. I can always click on it here, but I can see up there. Oh, no, I can see up there.
Did I move it?
No, nope, you're fine.
Well, you're good, but.
I can also see it right there.
I can follow along with this. I just have problems with small print.
All right, members of the select board and finance committee, thank you for having me this evening to present my first. Town administrators operating capital budget as town administrator here in the town of Hubbardston. Again, I thank you for all of your individual work up to this point, everybody has answered their phones and emails. And been readily available, whether it was a question on institutional knowledge or hey, why are we paying this? And it's been awesome thus far, the, but I unfortunately am going to note that that's where the awesomeness ends. Uh, after, after this, it gets a little more.
Itchy.
Yeah, there are many people I'd like to thank for helping with this budget, including the town dedicated department heads, elected officials and volunteers. I'd like to give a special thanks to our finance team and past treasurer collector Sandy Nathan, who was a big hand to me. Even on her way out the door, she helped with every aspect that I asked her to and Kelly Punch Pontybrant? I've I've never said Kelly's last name out loud.
I, yeah, don't, I I can read it, I can't say it.
So thank you, she's been great as well, they, the whole finance team has been wonderful. Tony has helped a lot with all of this as well, so I thank her as well. Here are some budget highlights based on revenue and expenditure projections as well as the use of one-time funds, the budget is balanced. Many of my predecessors in the past have kind of lowball certain numbers to get it to a. A budget that did not use one-time free cash, I feel like we are past the point. That that was an opportunity that I could realistically make with our decision as a community to use free cash. At special town meeting last year, it creates a reliancy year after year after year, once you do it. But prior to actually using free cash in your operating budget, you can sort of rob Peter to pay Paul to get by and patch it year to year. This budget supports municipal government that is focused on providing level services and is aligned with the community's values and the goals of the select board. Uh, you're going to hear me a few times this evening point to that, even though there is an increase, there is. By no means a substantial increase on the municipal side of this budget. The increase of three point, I believe three point two seven overall is due to large increases in education. And healthcare and retirement, the department heads have been putting together level funded budgets. With only asks that are actually needed to provide a service or contractually obligated. Here is a revenue analysis, we have gone up slightly since last year. FY twenty three approximately three point eight two, that is with numbers that are very preliminary. We are still waiting to see where a lot of our local receipts will come in. State aid still has to go through both the house budget session and the senate budget session before being finalized by. Governor Healy, so this is still a very early on, it's unfortunate that we as a municipality. And we're not alone, have to wait until the kind of last minute as we approach July one to know what our actual numbers are gonna be. Expenditures continue to grow and it is not being helped at all. By the national situation that's going on and prices of everything rising. The general government budget, I am proposing goes up zero point six eight percent, the public safety budget. One point four five percent, the education budget five point six four percent, public works two point four zero percent. Human services, zero point six eight percent. Culture and recreation, one point zero three percent, debt at a negative fifty six point seven five percent. Which is something that we will be discussing in a fir- in a future slide that will. I will need likely a vote or at least a, a nudge in a certain direction to continue moving forward. And we can talk about that in a little bit, our assessments went down zero point six six percent in unclassified, which will be the healthcare and the retirement. Uh, ours going up seventeen point zero three percent, those numbers are a little more steady than other numbers. Cause we already did receive an assessment from the retirement and the healthcare companies, that doesn't mean that things cannot change. But they're usually able to be taken at their word fairly early. Some of the service additions that I have placed into this proposed budget is a ten, ten thousand dollar classification and co- compensation survey. Upgrade, update, not upgrade, which would update our two thousand and nineteen compensation and classification survey. With the state of employment in the public and private sector. It is getting more and more challenging to recruit and keep good employees. So I want to make sure that we're at least aware of what a competitive salary would be. For the type of employees, we have a lot of really good qualified employees. I would like to be able to update the clas- classification and compensation survey to today's standards, both regionally and internally. This is something that we, it's best practice to do it every five years, but with COVID, it changed a lot. More drastically than usually would in a five-year period. The new Taser contract within the police budget is actually a twelve thousand dollar hit. But the police chief was able to move some things around to make it approximately two thousand dollar increase. This is due to a change in the contracts that we have with Axon or Taser. Previously, the contract did not buy all of the parts and I'm thinking plugs and all that. Previously, the contract did not buy all of the parts and I'm thinking plugs and all that stuff that is with the TASERS and this new contract will. With that came a significant increase year over year. The police chief was able to kind of backload the contract, which you will be able to see in the long-form version of the budget, budget book, to get a discounted rate in the first year or two, and it increases in the latter part of the contract. The accountant had requested that her travel reimbursement be brought back into the budget. It's something that I am at least willing to discuss. All of the other communities that our shared accountant worked for do provide her with a travel reimbursement, so we can, it's something we can talk about if it doesn't end up in the final budget. I'm sure I can speak with the accountant regarding that and she won't be too upset to see it go, but it's something that I wanted to make sure that she knew I was putting in here to try to get for. Additionally, there is a assessor slash admin clerk. Basically, what happened here is RRG, our assessor, would like us to take back the position currently fi- filled by a, a woman named Jenny. She is doing the work, but is not here a large amount of time. It results in constituent strain with the assessor's department and creates unnecessary issues. So at that, at that point, when it had come up a couple of times, RRG had reached out to me and said, hey, is there any way that the town could take back funding this position? With knowing that that position was approximately eight to ten thousand dollars, I wanted to propose combining it with the ten hours that Tony, the executive assistant, is no longer going to be doing. Some of the things I am proposing in the long-form version of the budget are project management, HR assistance, assistance with grant writing, and management of the, and being the clerk for the assessor's office. The final item on this service additions list is the transition from land use clerk to part-time planner. We have great opportunities within planning, zoning, and economic development that fall directly in line with select board goals. But in order to be able to, to seek out those opportunities, apply for grants, and just really keep up with the other municipalities, we will need to compensate our land use clerk better than he currently is compensating, being compensated. I understand that certain members of the board are not of the idea that you should be changing positions based on incumbents. But we do have one heck of a land use clerk who has gone out of his way time and time and time again to ensure that we are doing our due diligence when it comes to land use and planning. He actually wrote with my office a, a grant proposal that we submitted last week for two different projects that I will bring up in my town administrator's report after this.
Nate, do you want questions on that right now, or do you want me to hold them to the end?
Can we hold until the end?
I will do my best.
All right.
She's gonna have a whole list. You know that, Nate.
I'm aware.
Okay. Start writing.
The capital budget has only been decreased from since our last time speaking on this matter because the fire truck is going to be more expensive than Chief Hayes had originally thought it would be, so I re.
Ambulance?
Oh, yeah, the ambulance. My apologies. The, the ambulance that's funded through potentially the capital improvement plan, ARPA and ARPA funds. Everything else is the exact same as it was before with ten thousand dollars being removed from additional road repair to make all the numbers work. Once I found out that what was proposed to me from previous members of the finance committee in terms of using debt to pay off an item without debt paperwork was not appropriate, so I removed that. And we can discuss further during question time or as the season progresses. Here's the elephant in the room. The, I'm using six percent as a number. Realistically, we could take a four point five percent increase on the chin without using free cash to supplement our budget. Two, on the right side of the screen is different variable percentages, different from FY twenty-three at different rates. Right now, the Quabbin Regional School District is, has us at a fourteen point six percent increase, which would be just short of eight hundred thousand dollars over FY twenty-three. Even though they are stating point blank that that is obviously not the final number, that is the number they are giving us right now. That is not a number I could reasonably budget with. It would, we couldn't do it. We, we could not conceivably put fourteen point six percent in there. So I'm hoping that as we get closer and closer and closer to the end of the year with more input from us and numbers being finalized, this number comes much closer to what I am projecting versus what is currently being projected by, by the school system. It's incredibly challenging. As you all know, I'm preaching to the choir here to be told that the numbers are going up with eighty-eight percent of, of annual growth. Like, that is an actual number. And with the way it's written right now, the Quabbin Regional School District would be using eighty-eight percent of all new money. So, and if it goes up too much higher, then that would make us have to make more difficult and more difficult choices, even going as far as potentially pushing a two and a half override into, into this year. I'm hoping that with working with the school committee and with the office of the superintendent, that that's not something we have to look into moving forward, but we do have to be prepared for, for those type of events. Here is a, on the screen is a review of the next five years with the numbers from the proposal placed within the chart. It is very similar to other years with our revenue streams going up approximately two percent to three percent year over year. And state aid is the same. Here is a five-year projection with the new numbers in. It's also in your, in your long-form budget proposal. If you cannot see this, but it brings, it projects out five years in all of the different expenditure categories as well as revenue less expense, showing us what our current structural deficit is running around at. You can see the eighty-two thousand five hundred and fifty-four is what I have proposed here today. But there is a variable in that, and what I want the people here and the people at home to remember that a financial forecast is purposely vague, where you bring your, your revenues are anticipated down and your expenditures are anticipated up. So those numbers, at least from FY twenty-five on, would be a bad day and not necessarily what would come to fruition as we moved through the budget process. Oh, no.
Bring it.
One second.
Tony's in the way.
Yep, Tony was. All right, let's go. Sorry. Here is what I've kind of been alluding to throughout my presentation. Quote, budget for FY twenty-four by myself is balanced by a hundred and sixteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty-three dollars that will be expiring this year and eighty-two thousand, five hundred and fifty-four oh three in free cash. To aid in further understanding of this issue, I have provided three examples here on the screen. Basically, what is happening here and my predecessors have been talking about this for a number of years is we have to make a choice on what to do with approximately a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. The way I have it written up right now is to put it all back into the operating. The downfall of that is that it would then be incredibly difficult to get money for capital, for large-scale capital projects such as fire trucks and public safety buildings down the road without votes or serious sacrifice.
Nate, can you back up and explain that a little bit for folks at home? So when we're talking about expiring debt, in this case, and a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars, can you explain a little bit more precisely what you're talking about?
Yes, approximately ten years ago, there was a roads project that was taken on by the town. I don't remember exactly how much, but it was a multimillion-dollar project that went about ten years out over the ten years. We paid it at a hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year. So now that that, in, in FY twenty, twenty-three, fiscal year twenty-three, the last one hundred and eighty thousand dollar payment was made to kind of finish off paying that bond. With that being said, the number is lower than a hundred and eighty because we also have payments that we have to make in principal and interest to the new school roof project that has yet to even be bonded. So that number, those numbers were taken right off the top, leaving us with the approximately one hundred and seventeen thousand dollars that we're looking at right now.
And that one seventeen, that was all within, um, our operating budget.
Yeah, it was all.
We did not do debt exclusions or capital exclusions for that.
No, ma'am.
Okay, so what we did is we essentially said, okay, this item is done. This money is all set. We don't need to keep budgeting for this because we're no longer paying this. So let's take that out of the budget document and let's put the money where we need the money.
Yeah, that's the way it is written right now.
Okay.
And that is proposal one, which we're speaking of right now. Proposal number two, which would drastically increase our deficit. What the bottom lines I would like people to kind of keep an eye on are what these different choices would do to the structural deficit. Like, this one where all of the money was essentially rolled into the budget obviously brings deficit down the most and leaves us with approximately fifty thousand, eight hundred and eight dollars in free cash and allowing us to place a hundred thousand dollars in our reserve accounts, thus following our financial policies. Here, this would be the all debt proposal where we choose to either take on debt for a project such as a fire truck or make a one-time payment on another debt line item to buy us a little time. But here, we would be making a large devotion to our future capita- capital needs. But with that being said, it would severely increase the deficit in the bottom line and we would have to move around approximately sixteen thousand dollars either from potential reserves or in cuts. The third option.
So going back to the, real quick, Nate, just to make sure we're all on the same page.
Yep.
So this proposal is you take that hundred and sixteen that you previously took out and put it towards something else.
Yep.
You leave it where it is and you pay for debt of some fashion, either something new or something currently there to do another payment.
Mm-hmm.
But doing so would mean that we either have to go back to our operating budget and reduce lines for expenses.
Yes.
Or alternatively su- supplement with additional free cash to cover the costs.
Well, there would be no more additional free cash. We would have to move it around from the, from the other proposed.
Okay.
Uses.
Uses. And the third option that I'm putting out was what I call the hybrid option, which would be keeping fifty thousand dollars in, in the debt line items to either make a payment or take on some sort of, some sort of debt. I can, if this is the chosen path we take, I can work with our financial advisors to figure out exactly the number, but I wanted to use a nice round number here this evening, so I chose fifty thousand dollars. And that would mean our number that we need in, in free cash would go up, but it would still allow us to have some free cash going into the next year, make a, make a payment into our reserve accounts and continue not crazy far off of what we would be in other situations while still maintaining some sort of commitment to our capital expenditures moving forward.
So those are the three options. In your opinion, Nate, what is your recommendation to the select board of those three?
My recommendation to the select board, even though I wrote it out in, in A, is the hybrid op- hybrid option is figuring out what kind of project we could take on, whether it be the new fire truck or something that has yet to be proposed yet. But I believe the, this board and this town has spent too many years kind of chugging along with the capital improvement plan to the, to now go and say, hey, you know what, like, in the op, the deficit, we are kind of in no matter what. Like, there needs to be a larger loss, a larger fix or an opportunity to actually get us out of that. And it is my opinion that completely throwing away our capital expenditure ease would be foolish. And we could talk about this. Actually, is this, I, there are a couple more slides, but I feel like this would be an appropriate place to pause for questions, comments, concerns.
So if we pay fifty grand off on something, in theory, you'd have the fifty grand still in the operating budget for loans, but would that put another fifty grand in the next year anyway and we'd be back to almost a hundred?
No.
Do you follow my thought process? No, okay.
You'd be spending it, go bye-bye.
You'd be spending it, it would, it would go away. And then next year, we would either a fire truck or whatever the board and the finance committee and the town's whole seats.
I was just thinking, if, if we bought something that was fifty grand off the capital improvement that's coming up.
Truck?
Yes, like a vehicle of some sort.
Like an F two fifty?
Yeah, and that would free up fifty grand. Do you understand where, where I'm going with this?
Mm-hmm.
And it would still almost keep that line pretty well equal. And then that way we.
I have to look into the legality of it because that's what I did with the, uh, with the Main Street paving for the fire department and why it's no longer on the capital improvement plan. And then David from Unibank told me that we cannot just make willy-nilly payments out of the deadline. It would either have to be towards something.
That's what I mean, towards the truck.
But we don't have a bond out for said truck.
Right.
Ah, oh, okay, so we couldn't buy something that we don't have a bond on. It would have to be paying something we already have a loan.
Yes, at least in his opinion.
Okay, all right.
So I guess my only.
And this isn't something that we need to have an answer on tonight. We can continue moving through the budgetary process and see how different items come to fruition and then make a decision. And there is room for additional hybrid opportunities. If fifty thousand dollars is too little or too much, we can, someone can make a proposal and we, and I have no problem drafting up multiple budgets, doing multiple different uses for this expiring fund, but I didn't want to go too far into the budget season without us kind of putting it in front of us.
Nate, can you go back two slides, please?
Two?
Mm-hmm. Okay, so this was the original proposal here, right? So with this one, you have FY twenty-four recommend capital would be three hundred and sixty thousand dollars that we would expect, right? So we keep having these conversations, you know, week after week, month after month. We, we don't have a lot of money to play with. We don't have a lot of money to play with. And it's great that we're funding our capital within our operating budget, but we have expanding personnel needs just to pay people a living wage that we need to take care of.
Mm-hmm.
And by switching some of this money over back to the general expense side, it's not ideal because it's not growing the capital, but we talk about this time and time again. It's great to have new equipment. It's fantastic. Too bad we have no one to drive it, right? So I think it, I think it's still something we got to figure out at the end of the day. But in my mind, I'd rather put the money back into the operating budget to get services back out to the people, to get staff, to get personnel, to make sure that we can have people here to be able to provide services to the towns.
Let's remember that it's one hundred percent eaten by our education line. Like this just goes, oh, here's a hundred and sixteen, boom, gone. And it's our other funds that we're using to bring, bring it back up.
I, I like what you're saying, Heather, and I agree with you completely. But at the same time, I've also lived in this town a very long time and have seen some ridiculously old equipment that the employees hate fighting with to try to get to work. That is demoralizing.
Yeah.
Um, so if we don't have the equipment, it's, it's, which came first, the chicken or the egg? Do you want the employees or do you want the, the equipment for them to actually use? You need both. So I, I agree what you're saying, but we got to keep this capital stuff being able to like fix and remodel and move forward, or else we're going to be back where we were, where we were just in it up to our eyeballs and everything's falling apart.
How have we done in the past? Do we have a track record on a history of debt or capital exclusions for the town?
We can make one.
For stuff? Well, you know, just get a DLS website. It'll give you a history of any override vote that's ever happened.
None.
No, it's not true.
Well, we can, no, we can't.
We've, and we've approved things.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
We've got a debt exclusion, yeah.
There's been debt exclusion.
One or two of them.
Yeah, so capital is like a one-time, one-year project.
Yeah.
But my only question is, right, so we know at some point we're going to have to go to the people for more money. Question is, how do we do it, right? Do we go to people for more money for everything and just say override our entire budget? Or do we say, you know what, let's start transitioning out capital from that and get people to support buying X, buying Y? And I know it's not a conversation for this evening, but my concern is that we have such a large number for money for capital within the budget. I get what you're saying, Nate, the concern that the school's going to see the number and just say, thank you very much. It's very nice of you to free up that fund. But-
That's not even them saying. That's what will happen.
That's what they do.
Like-
But I mean, at the end of the day, we still have to try to do the best we can for
Absolutely.
our town's people and our personnel.
What was the capital budget amount, again, that we, was it three eighty?
Three eighty. I'm, I miswrote three sixty right there.
Okay.
I mean, the, the, at the six percent level.
Yeah.
Right, yeah. Roughly each percent's roughly fifty thousand dollars, right? Yeah.
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, around that.
Yeah, okay.
And there's not, like, let's remember as well that I have this budget proposal with the school at six percent. If, if we do all this and they come in at eight, that's-
All goes out the window.
That goes out the window anyway.
Yeah, you might not need the equipment because you won't have anybody to run.
Yeah. That's, that's a scary, that is a real thought. We've had this-
Yeah, and they don't care whether you're going to cut police, fire, or whatever. They don't care.
And let's-
And for discussion purposes, just, let's, let's say that that happens. What does that do to your three recommendations?
Throws them out the window.
Start again.
So the hybrid is not in?
Well, hybrid could still be in, dependent on how much it went the other direction. Like, if they come in and say eight point five's the final, that's the money where we're taking that from to go back to not have to go to the taxpayers this year and-
Well, the reason I'm asking is, in the ten years I've been on, on the board, I've never seen the school department come to us, meaning matching what, ah, what we needed. We've always had to go to them, and that's what is going up. So my feeling is that whatever that comes down is not going to be what we can afford and what we want. So I don't think we should rea- realistically budget for that because, as I said, the ten years I've been here, it's never happened.
Regardless of what the actual budgetary figures come out to be, I do believe that there has to be a decision made regarding moving forward with whatever this number may be. Even if we, if it goes up and it ends up being only eighty thousand dollars, we still have to figure out what that means. Do we want to move forward with some debt in our, in our line items? Do we want to use it to push the structural deficit off a few more years? No matter what, that's still, that's still looming. This isn't enough to say goodbye to that. Or do we exasperate the whole issue and just keep it all in debt? So we can talk about it at the end, and I can finish this unless anybody else-
Why don't we, uh, not, why don't we make an investment into tax titles and sell some property?
So I think that's a different conversation.
Yeah, and that is a, that is a priority. That was, I actually have a meeting with, with Mark.
I just wanted to put it out there.
I have a, I have a meeting with Mark tomorrow to talk about surplus lands, ten thirty.
Yeah. I was thinking about taking some of that, freeing up your money there. You know, we got, we're holding a lot of properties and, because we don't want to spend a five thousand each property to process it. Well, let's dump them. Make an investment in that and dump the properties. I know it's only a quick fix, but, you know, at least somebody will get the paycheck they deserve or whatever.
And that's something we can look into. I wouldn't have any answers for you this evening.
I just wanted to put-
It's also not going to give us any additional money anytime soon, right?
No.
Because even if we do auction off a property, it comes as free cash.
It's something for thought. Yeah, it's something for thought.
What's the dollar? What's the da? How much money are we talking?
I don't know.
Do we know how many ba- how many properties the town currently has that-
Not off the top of my head. We, we do-
A lot of the properties are landlocked, like little parcels, like ten acres, five acres, out in the middle.
But you're still auctioning because neighbors might want them.
Yeah, but you'd get-
But still hold them back from the taxes for the ten cents.
So, so twenty, twenty-six acres every time going around is sixty-three dollars in tax, like landlocked land. Twenty, twenty-six acres is sixty-three dollars, I believe, is what I pay for landlocked land.
Okay, what's the valuation of that property? What's the bar?
Um, I think it's evaluated at like thirty grand, sixty grand, something like that. It's landlocked land, twenty-six acres, out in the middle of the woods, landlocked.
You take ten of those properties, now you're talking three hundred thousand.
So you can't get to it. And that's what, and I'm not saying they're all like that. There are some that are better. And a neighbor might want to buy the parcel next to it.
It was just something I wanted to put out there for thought in the future.
Yeah.
You know, I, I understand it's, you're talking probably years down the road before you see anything. You know what I mean, but it could be a new contract negotiation for QRSD.
But I think we also have to realize, but just on the discussion too, that two and a half has to be in our plans.
Yes.
It has to be. We're, we're in trouble.
Yeah.
And that is in my long form proposal I do not announce, but I do state in multiple places that within the next six months we will be, we will be coming forward with a, an action plan, potentially a committee to drive this with some-
Yeah. But we also have, we've got to have a plan. If that doesn't go through, you've got to have another plan, so.
Yeah.
Is what it is.
So this is not something that I was anticipating a vote on this evening, but my predecessors had been speaking about it for years, saying year after year that in twenty twenty-four, we're going to have to make a choice. Here we are, twenty twenty-four, we're going to have to make a choice between capital operating or some sort of mission.
Well, since you got to ask the taxpayers one way or another for something, I would put it all in operate.
And that is the way that I have it written up on the screen right now. As an overview, the only mistake on there is the, it's three eighty in cap- in capital instead of three sixty.
Oh, yeah, I see that now. Okay.
Other than that, we meet all of our financial goals, use a limited amount of free cash, very similar to the amount we used last year.
Is the free cash surplus deficit line item there still correct then with three eighty? Is, is it just a typo?
It would be twenty, twenty thousand dollars less.
Oh, it is. Oh, so math is, the math is wrong. Okay.
Eight thousand.
Yeah, it would be twenty thousand dollars less, so eighty thousand dollars.
Eight thousand and eighteen.
Oh, all right, okay.
Eighty, eighty-eighteen rolling over to FY twenty-five, which is still more than we rolled over this year.
That's right.
We rolled over approximately seventy-five thousand dollars in FY twenty-three.
Right. Right, okay.
What else do we have here? What's next? You all know, because you've done this more times than I have. But a public hearing and communications campaign, a campaign on the budget proposal, final budget revisions based on suggestions from the select board, finance committee, and the public. We'll hold a number of meetings with the finance committee and a number of public hearings to get input on it. Then the select board votes and makes changes and approves a proposed budget for FY twenty-four. And the FY twenty-four budget is then brought to the finance committee and to the residents at annual town meeting on June sixth.
All right, you ready for questions, Nate?
No.
Okay. So there, there actually, I don't have too many, surprisingly. Um, so under the select board line, so you're requesting ten thousand dollars for non-union classification compensation study. Where'd the number ten K come from?
Because the one I did in Princeton was eight, and we're a little bigger than that.
Oh, is only, okay. I haven't seen any under eighteen K, so.
Yeah, for a new one. I believe the updates are slightly cheaper, but I can look into that.
All right. So, and that would include the scope of getting all the scoring mechanisms so that in the event anything changed, we'd be able to apply?
For positions that- Yes.
Okay. Um, assessors, so RRG, where are we? We have a contract with them?
Yep, there's one more year.
There's one more, so FY twenty-four is the last year?
Yeah, and I'm meeting with the assessors in the coming weeks to determine where their minds are at with that. But as I'm sure you know, as someone who's worked in many small municipalities, it is easier to, it's the devil you know.
Mm-hmm.
And because it is very difficult to find an option that is not RRG or almost none.
Okay. Land use position. I knew it was going to be this one.
And I, and I, I do have draft job descriptions for both of the positions proposed that will be brought out over the budget process.
So it sounds like to me where you're proposing here, if I understand this correctly, is you would like to revise the job description to reflect the role and the activities that the current person in that position is currently doing. With such, you'd like to propose a title change for that position?
Yes.
Okay. And if I understood you correct, the amount change here would be a thousand dollar increase?
Yeah, in, if, in the actual line item.
Okay.
Yep.
So but a thousand dollars, so Bob in the position, it's not Bob, but I like Bob. Bob would get a thousand dollars more next year for additional job responsibilities and a change of title.
Yes.
What's Bob getting this year?
No, he would, he would get, he would get significantly more, but with all of the-
I thought he wasn't getting paid.
With all of the positions rolling around, that's why there is the ten thousand for the other position. Because I believe Tony's current hours are in the planning board or planning line.
I thought we were adding her hours to the assessor people. Combining these hours with the ten administrative hours not being worked to create a more appealing open position in Assessors one forty-one.
Yes.
So is that the same ten hours or is that a different ten hours?
Let me get back to you.
Okay, okay. So I guess my question-
I will clarify the hours and the impact of the, of the proposed service additions.
Okay, so on the land use position, right, so we have a wage and comp chart currently.
Yes.
So we know where this person currently falls on the wage and comp chart based on their land use clerk position.
Mm-hmm.
So I assume in moving them to the part-time planner, is that the same number of hours or is that additional hours?
It would be the same number of hours at a slightly higher rate.
Okay, so since this wasn't a position we had previously on the wage and comp chart, how did you go about determining where it should be on the wage and comp chart?
I looked into, I have a whole file on this. I looked at a, a couple of part-time planner positions, and I can provide that information at, at a soon, at a meeting upcoming. Do not have it in front of us today unless I open my emails.
But would the person fall on the wage and comp chart comparable to other people in our organization that have similar responsibilities, education, et cetera, et cetera? So that we wouldn't be paying this person, although, you know, on par with other part-time planners around? But, you know, make sure that they're still in the range with our own people.
Absolutely, and this is very much the, the first proposal here. We're at the very beginning of the, of the budgetary season. I can clarify all of this for, for everybody as we move forward.
Okay, may I ask one more follow-up question?
Yes.
Oh. Sorry, sorry, Susan. So in regards to this part-time planner position, so what is the plan in the event that the planner departs?
We would hire a new part-time planner in hopes that they would have either the same sort of qualifications and skills or a different set of qualifications and skills, possibly in economic development or in GIS. The plan would be to continue to use them as a part-time planner, but maybe that their skill set is not the same as the incumbents in water, land use. Or, but we would do our best to find somebody that does have another relevant skill set.
Okay, so changing from the land use clerk to the part-time planner, does that increase the services provided to our residents?
Absolutely.
Okay. If the part-time planner leaves and we can't find someone with equal qualifications to take the position, are we then unfortunately going to be reducing the services to the residents as a result? Because part-time planners are, um, not easy to come by.
They're not. My second witness here is the chair of the planning board, so maybe-
I, I've had these conversations with the so-called chair of the planning board, and they go very similar.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you, Nate, for the answers to those questions. Um, last one I have under unclassified.
Mm-hmm.
So, uh, as far as unemployment goes, so it looks like we've been budgeting fifteen K for the past couple of years. Do we know what our, and you may not have this answer in front of you, can we find out what the actuals have been?
Yes.
Because a lot of times-
I would say it's twelve.
Okay.
So we paid twelve thousand in unemployment for someone this year. I can get you that actual number.
Okay. And to see if it's something that's like unusual or something that's normal, because a lot of towns don't come close to spending that.
Yeah.
And also, well, never mind. Remind me offline to talk about making sure that we have the three categories who aren't eligible not being reported. Because that costs us a lot of money in towns. That's all I have for questions.
That's good. Any further questions from anyone on the select board or finance committee at this time?
They all have the same ones.
Yeah.
That's right, that's right. They were all ask and answer.
We're all thinking on that, you know, on our lines.
Can you remind us all, but mostly me, as to the schedule, the calendar, the timeline? In other words, when should finance committee next meet?
Deadline for all warrant articles is at our next meeting.
Okay. She's got it in front of her?
Yeah.
All right.
We can, I can meet with you with any relevant department heads that you would like to meet in the next two weeks if you would like.
Okay. All right. For the April third, um, the April third meeting, that's the, that's the, um, is that a, uh, select board meeting that you're inviting?
Yeah, that's our next meeting.
That's fantastic. That's next week?
It's two weeks from yesterday.
Two weeks, two weeks.
You wouldn't necessarily need to be there as the finance committee because it, the closing of the warrant is simply a vote of the select board.
Exactly, yeah. No, that's, you're inviting us, but that's not something we need to, you need us there for. Okay. So, in other words, then the next, the next expectation is, is a, a finance committee is April eighteenth.
The hearing, the hearing, yeah.
For our, for the, the public hearing.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and we can change that date if we, if, if we see fit. This was made months ago. If that's not a date that works for, for your committee, we can move it around to make it work.
I would like to make it, to move it around to make it work if we can.
All right, yeah, we, let's talk about that offline, Madam Chair.
Okay, all right. Okay, great, thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? You have more to, uh?
I do not. Thank you for hearing my proposal this evening. I appreciate your questions and I look forward to working with you all as we move towards annual town meeting in June. Uh, any questions? as we move towards annual town meeting in June. Uh, any questions at any time, you all know how to reach me. Thank you.
Thanks, Nate.
All right, no more business before the finance committee? Motion to adjourn?
Am I supposed to hear yes?
Yes.
Okay, uh, all in favor?
Yes, sir.
Aye. Okay, meeting adjourned at eight P M.
Okay, moving to the town T A report.
Oh, me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Again.
No, no.
It's all you.
It's all you.
I'm keeping it short this week because I did put a lot of my bandwidth into writing and thinking about the budget and welcoming Mary to our team.
I gotta take that.
So with that, I, we welcomed Mary Markowski as treasurer collector to our team on Monday. Uh, most of you, the four out of five of you saw her yesterday at the police chief's swearing-in ceremony, which was very nice and well-attended. We've been getting a lot of compliments on that. I would like to thank the ladies from the senior center. Tony, Bobby, and Nancy for their work putting that all together. They, I would have not made it look anywhere near as nice, so I was happy that I, that they were able to all chip in.
Susan and Lorraine from the senior.
Susan and Lorraine, that, from the senior center, that is.
Yeah, great job.
Yes.
Those were the masterminds behind all of the food and decorations at yesterday's event. We will be hosting, holding Open Gov training for the building department next week and the following week to attempt to bring our building department back up to the standard that it has been in the past and will be in the future. I had a very straight and forward conversation with Open Gov about how if this did not get fixed, we would be seeking another vendor in another year, not looking to, to fix the problem. I began today holding goal sessions with several employees. That'll go for approximately the next three weeks. And then at some point in April, I will have a department goals presentation to bring, bring forward to the select board. That will likely be around the same time as my entry report, which I am currently scheduling for April seventeenth. The hundred days has now passed, so I am compiling my data and looking forward to bringing that presentation to you guys likely at your meeting of April seventeenth. I'm gonna do a lot of talking over, over the next couple of months, I, I can.
Yes.
I hosted town clerk Kristen Foster on my mini television program, Hubbardson Headlines, uh, approximately two weeks ago. She did a wonderful job and she announced that nomination papers will be available for the spring twenty twenty-three annual town election this coming Monday, March twenty-seventh. They're open for a couple of weeks. People watching from home can learn more about the different opportunities and timelines for those on the town website and as part of the budget. I held a meeting of the chairs meeting approximately a week ago, and it was, it was wonderful. I learned a lot. There was a lot of, there was a lot of back and forth between chairs. I think that it was actually quite beneficial to have, and we will have them again in the future. Not too, too often because I don't wanna be taking up too much of the chairs' time.
Because they did comment that they were glad that you had something like that.
Good.
They did comment that, so, and wanted to do it again, so that was good.
Yeah, and we will do it again. I'm thinking probably every other month or quarterly, yeah. Yeah, and that is about it for right now. I will have a full written report on the website within a day. Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to policies to review. I don't believe we have any. Okay, Matt is not reasonably anticipated with a chair. I don't have any. Does anybody have anything to bring up?
I had a question.
Go.
Has to do with Zoom. How are meetings, because I know that's coming up to an end, so what's going on with Zoom meetings? Are they gonna be allowed, not allowed, what hybrids?
Yeah, there may be a item on your next agenda regarding that.
Okay.
I am doing research into the way in which the Hubbardson Select Board accepted the.
Remote participation.
The remote participation rules.
Okay. Okay.
So, and we may bring it up at the next meeting.
Okay. So we don't have an answer quite yet.
So this legislation that was filed to extend the, yes, to extend things the way they are now until the end of March of twenty twenty-five.
Again? Okay. Really?
However, whether or not that clears all of the hurdles it has to clear prior to March thirty-first of twenty twenty-three
Yeah.
is yet to be seen. So precautionary measures suggest that we look at adopting remote participation. Remote participation was the old rule prior to the ability to, um, just do remote or hybrid meetings. What it requires is you have to have a majority of your board present, so you have to have a quorum. So like three of us would have to be present and then two people could participate on Zoom and that would be fine. You have to do it because you have a geographic distance or an illness, like there's certain reasons.
Mm-hmm.
But Nate's point is there is legisla- that you have to accept, the town has to accept it in some fashion. Usually the select board has to accept, but that's going back a long time.
Yeah.
So whether or not we actually did, and even if we didn't, we need to do it now, he just needs to understand the ins and outs and how to do it.
But a main meeting would have to be in person. Okay.
A quorum of the body would have to be in person.
Has to physically present, yes, so that's the difference.
Okay.
I mean, it, it, this, I, is this because the governor's ending COVID emergency?
Well, the, the remote guidance would have ended at the end of March regardless, and it actually ended approximately a year ago
and you? Yeah.
and then was extended.
Yeah.
So, and they waited until the, until eleven fifty-nine to do it at that time.
Yeah.
So, this doesn't mean that it's not gonna get extended just because it is now the twenty-first of March, a week ahead of it.
So. Right. And prior, prior to COVID, did you have remote? Is that what you were talking about?
Yeah, there was remote.
That's how she was explaining.
There was remote participation, but it, you had to be phys- you had to have a quorum physically present to be able to do it.
Yeah, okay. Yeah.
And there was only certain reasons you could do it. Kind of like the difference between absentee voting versus, um, uh, I'll be.
In person.
Absentee versus.
Malin, thank you.
Was that more, more for the select board or more for the people?
Malin, thank you. It was for the select, no, no, this remote participation was truly just for the board's members to participate.
Okay.
It had nothing to do with any of the audience members.
Okay, thank you.
The likelihood of municipal governance evolving to allow the general population to participate via remote means will be here forever from now on because that's the way life is. Like there are a lot of people that would rather be watching from home or on social media, and so that is not going anywhere. What we're, what we're speaking of is the ability to have a quorum of a board. So right now, all of you could be meeting legally from your homes. If that changed, that's what would change. You would, we would still likely have to have a Zoom or virtual means for the residents to participate. And I wouldn't, as town administrator, I wouldn't recommend changing that because it's, it's great to be able to get more people involved, even if they're just popping in from their dinner table.
Yeah, some of the committees though, like, I can't see the council of budgeting doing like a Zoom, maybe more for select board and things like that, but.
And smaller committees that have very niche roles, like I can see cultural councils meeting like that or affordable housing.
Yeah, but if they'd have to be in a quorum, how would they?
Yeah, if it goes back to the old way.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
I'm dou- I'm doubtful that it'll go back to that.
I think.
Yeah.
I think if we had to go the old way, it would literally be a whole over for a couple of weeks until the legislation passed, just to cover us.
Okay, you think it's gonna, you think it's gonna, oh, it's, of course it's gonna pass.
If we wanted to have something. Oh, I, they're, they're very confident it's gonna pass, just a matter of hope it passes, it's gonna get to.
Well, of course, why would? I, I, it's control of both houses.
So.
Okay.
Okay, that was my question, thank you.
All right, no public address, so there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Right.
Close, meeting adjourned.